Thank you. Tuesday. The August 2nd, year 2022. Rules and conduct, don't misbehave, raise your hand if you have things to say, you're an audience citizen. If you are called upon, please state your name and address. Because of ruckus or any promotion, you'll be asked to leave. We will mute you and we will ask you to leave the building. Thank you very much. Next. This hour. But we would. Our five nations, we are five, United States of America. Into the following, which stands my location. I forgot. It is all of the ability, just so. Move to, uh, I make a motion to approve the agenda with the following corrections. Move to add to under number nine, appointments and resignation. Nine point three, the resignation of Mark Volta, rec director. And add number. Add to number sixteen. Which is the executive session, the sixteen point three personnel. Anybody, anything else to discussion? All those in favor? All those, thank you. Okay, approve of the minutes, I made the motion that we approve the minutes of July nineteen. July nineteenth, twenty twenty two. Any. Any discussion? All those in favor? Audience of citizens. Nobody? See you, nine, uh, business, new business. Well. Curveball for the first of the fiscal year has been strong. And, uh, glad we was informed last week that our loader, we use it to power public works, the transmission is shot. And that is the first of what we think could be some other underlying problems. As well as the fact that it's too small to handle the jobs that the town puts it for, so. Uh, two hundred, two thousand and twelve loader. So I asked that be here to answer any questions, but that. Bottom line is we're projecting between thirty-five and forty thousand dollars to replace the transmission that includes the labor. Uh, and everything. Or, and then we'd still have a small loader that we've. Put a little tax a lot and put a lot of pressure on, that's number one. And it's ten years old. Number two is we have found a new loader. It's larger, the price is a hundred and seventy thousand. But we could get forty thousand trade in on a current loader without putting money into it. For a cost for the town of a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars at their delivery taxes, whatever, a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. Can you add to that?
Well, I did, because I know it's always a concern, buying new versus buying used. With that new piece of equipment. We get the municipality discount off the source dwell bid, which is the national bid system. So you save twenty-four percent off the list price, it also gives you a sixty month, five thousand hour full warranty. So you top the bottom of the machine for five years, it will be maintenance free. So I looked into what used equipment. Similar machines, same size. Actually, the prices range twenty twenty-one, a hundred and eighty-five thousand. Twenty sixteen, a hundred and twenty thousand. So the savings going used. With good quality is really not there. So it just seems like in the town's best interest to go new with the warranty and have a machine that's our. Our needs, because really a loader, I don't know if people know, but. We have a gravel pit on site, we. We screen all our own gravel and winter sand. It mixes the thought and sand next. Um, and loads all the twelve, twelve hundred long, so it's not a piece of machinery we can go without.
Thank you, you need a bigger one, just, I don't understand all that loader does, but why do I need a bigger one?
Just because when you're, when you're. Excavating your own gravel, you want a more powerful machine to dig into the banks. And the one that we have, that's one of the reasons why the transmission failed in only ten years, is we're just overworking it. It's not merely just scooping and loading, we're digging out of the gravel things and. Screening all that material.
Was this on the tenure budget anywhere?
It was. Further up, we didn't have. We knew it was undersized, but it was working, so why replace something?
So when was it scheduled to be used?
I have to look at my schedule, maybe four years out. It has, I. I don't know.
Yeah, could you?
Exactly, I didn't bring that.
Is forty thousand considered prepared, creating?
We were hoping twenty-five, so.
Well, you figure if they give us forty, and it saves us thirty thousand from fixing.
Right.
Uh, they're gonna have to put it somewhere, so let's say.
We only spent seventy thousand five years.
For that machine?
That machine.
Brand new, but you.
No.
So it's worth thirty thousand now.
The equipment is worth a lot, even used stuff, it's rusty.
Like, I think because it was undersized too, and you're blowing the high volume, obviously. Fine, as well, to have some maintenance issue.
Are there other capital expenditures, and maybe we could slip in here and try to do with this? Instead?
Well, I, without that, without that, uh, schedule in front of me, I don't know, we could almost push back a year on something, but. With the equipment.
Are we supposed to?
No.
It comes off of a national. And it's like first thing off the state bits, you don't.
Okay, gotcha.
And that's one thing, this machine, um. Happened to be available, felt through a client that was going to purchase it. You couldn't get funding, so I reached out to John here and multiple other vendors, and it's a twelve month wait. This just happened to be.
So if we don't scoop up this one that we happen to get lucky that it's available. We're gonna have, but when we ran the wheel. Forty, forty-five.
And try and limp it through the rest of the summer and winter.
And winter, winter is.
So it's not like it's a winter.
Oh, okay, so to help.
Well, the winter operation is critical, yeah.
All right, to help with this. I asked that to put together where we are at the start of the fiscal year with the general fund. So we were hoping, now you have to remember, we took out six hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars to, um. Keep the mill rate down. With that six hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Out of our general fund, we still stand at four point two million dollars in our general fund. So I'm asking, and we would go to four point. Zero five, ninety, yeah, point one point zero five. So we'd still have over a million dollars in our general fund. Please, I don't like dumping into the general fund right off the bat. But this is why we have a healthy fund, we know these things can come up. And we don't have to borrow money, we can, we don't have to finance it, we can buy it. So, um.
So knowing what I know about supply chain issues and equipment availability.
Yeah.
We got a job.
I know, the month, the twelve month, the next one is sixteen months.
Even to get parts, this thing might, so it breaks down, find parts. It's not fun.
No, that's what we're finding with the truck that we order. We won't even, they won't even build a capacity until between next March and June of twenty twenty-four.
So anything we can do to put a hold on it? For the time between now and?
We have been promised.
Okay.
If we vote on it tonight, and then we put it through the town meeting in the next two weeks. Because it has to be approved for the town. Um, they'll hold it for us, am I correct?
They said they would hold it without a deposit, so right now, they're putting our municipality as a priority.
I think we have to.
Yeah.
All right. So I moved to appropriate and transfer a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars from the town Columbia General Fund. To the capital account, DPW Capital Equipment. Charlie Oscar Alpha, number two zero dash six two zero five dash zero zero one. For the purchase to replace the Department of Public Works longer. We don't have to sit. Okay, that's fine. Uh, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, okay, so it's.
Thank you.
I make a motion. To set a town meeting for Tuesday, August sixteenth. Twenty twenty-two, six forty-five P M, in the Dela G Urban Conference Room for the following purpose. Clause one, to appropriate and transfer a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars from the town Columbia General Fund to the capital account. Recreation area. So, okay, this is correct, from the capital account to the recreation area improvement? No.
No, here.
Should be DPW Capital Equipment, I think. Use this. I'm gonna, oh, excuse me, I'm gonna amend by clause one, to appropriate and transfer a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. From the town of Columbia General Fund to the capital account, EPW Capital Equipment. Uh, two zero six two zero five zero zero one, for the purchase to replace the Department of Public Works lower. All those in favor? All those, thank you.
Uh, charging stations for being, now we have to set up the.
The retirement date?
The legal time, so you just did the motion. Am I correct?
No, I just did the motion to set the town meeting.
So you did seven point two.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Charging stations.
All right, so. Recently, there's, um. Ever Source incentives that'll cover charging stations. Uh, the school came to me, Maria and Bev were presented by Brendan Sharkey. He's, he used to be a state senator, he's now with the Pudsey Solutions. Um, they want to work with A C E S, which is a contractor that would work with them, install. Uh, do a full install of charging stations tied to, you know. The buses, they want to buy also electric buses, they're working with the bus company. Right now, and I don't know if the bus company news has actually applied for charging station yet. So they're trying to work all that out. I just want to give the board a slightly heads up, that's in the process, we're learning. I'm also talking to, um, Titan Energy. Chris Man, see what their thoughts are, but we're going back and forth, and right now. I'm not sure, they're talking about just one station at the border and one station at the town hall. That people will use a charge card to pay for their. Electric car charger. And, oh, we're talking about further row of charging stations for seven buses in the future.
Oh. When they charge your own buses, they're on soon.
They buy ours, they buy our diesel gas, but we charge it, so.
But how idle are they, are they gonna keep their buses there? I mean, once they're done with the routes, they, I would imagine they would come back and.
Right, and the bus is there, so the charge station would have to be a part of it, right? The same reason the diesel gas.
So this would be at no cost?
I don't even know all that, I just want to tell you, we're just starting to go down this road.
I, I, I'm not into paying for people's.
I'm not here to do that. I, I don't want to do any of that, that's why I never jumped on early on, but, but isn't this email saying that they would have to charge, they'd have to. Use some like. Well, if the bus company is charging, then we're billing them for whatever costs, so that being a company. What's that?
As long as we're not paying for.
But we may be paying a, a, a surcharge. For whatever fuel runs the bus, we are now, in some aspect. They may be saying, okay, we're charging the buses, but you will have to pay. X amount for the charge of the buses, because they're paying for it, they're gonna want to be reimbursed for using the buses. We'll have to see how it all works out.
And either way, we'll pay for it, or layer it up.
Or we'll be putting the solar field for them, and they can pull it up back for them, there's a lot of.
We are looking at that, we're gonna put solar.
But you can almost put it in.
You take it off the solar field, you put it to the grid, they buy it back. We sell it to the grid, grid button, so.
You know, with snow, or with rain, not.
Now, we also have Ever Source incentives, covering fifty percent chargers and, um. Deep. E V charging stations grant from deep, cover sixty-five percent of costs, so. There's too much flying at me right now.
Yeah, that, that.
I'm trying to figure that out.
It's one, it's interesting, but I, I would, I would be. It'd be hard to believe that N and J, it was the current contractor, I mean, they would replace the entire fleet of buses, and what you would think that they would phase in, you know. So I'm taking.
But they may have instead.
And we're also a priority count, well, we're one. Maybe it's based on our size, where.
Right, probably based on the fact that we run three types of bus buses. Local and town.
Okay, right.
So we're a priority for?
Priority meaning, when we go through these grants, we wouldn't personally want.
So so the grants become the state or?
Every source, every, our priority. Every source has money, they can go from everybody's, they have to spend on this. And that.
Yes, financing would be paid for by the credits built up by the use of the charging stations, mostly by those who use the charging stations with a credit card. Now, that sounds like the one-off charging stations in our parking lot, right? I don't know how. You charge your credit to school bus company.
I don't.
Oh, I don't, if they put in, if we put in a solar field, and they put in a solar field, and they lease the land, they break the lease down. There's costs that they'll be able to put on paper. Where we know how much the kilowatt hour costs really to produce? No, because it's all over, different times of the year, different weather elements, at my house, I don't produce an awful lot of kilowatt hours. In the wintertime, probably six hundred, but in the summertime, I do about twenty-two. In the end, I get to use sixteen hundred every month. In the wintertime, um.
So do you sell that to the Ever Source, right?
If somebody on wind sells it to the grid, the national grid. Then it's purchased back and delivered by Ever Source.
Unfortunately, best place for the solar field is right where we have all our wood burning and. Um, all our bulk piles of wood and brush on the old.
But it's still gonna be a lot of capital store right now.
But, but we're looking into that, that's.
What about, what about, uh, what happened to the, uh, in back of the school, yeah, that's what we're still looking at.
I just sent schematics to technology.
It sounds like, you know, in the long run, there can be a lot of electric cars around, it's, you know, it sounds like it's.
The government has said, in the next twenty-five years, thirty years, all government vehicles will be electric.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's a good idea, just gotta look at the cost and how it's gonna play out.
I, I personally feel there's something right around the corner, it's getting a little bit, hey, that's my. Between the fuel cells and your magnetic generators, they almost have that down, you're stuck. Solar ain't gonna be for long. It's just, it's kind of like for essence, remember, we all had five of us. What are we all doing now? Lead Ds. How are they projecting more Ds or something coming up right? In my.
Nothing for the lake, Joseph. Well, I, I'd like to say, we're doing a wonderful job keeping these off the beach, but. The struggle.
I was at the lake association meeting, they, they, they talked for over an hour of that. So, they didn't, yeah, they didn't set up an immediate, have a group of people to meet, trying to make recommendations, which I, um. That's my, they come.
Yeah, honestly, you know who we ought to be, and over fiction game.
Play, take swans, put them near their tops, very well, I'm imagining it wasn't.
We played, please, appointments and resignation, so. We need to correct the appointment of Wendy Savino as animal control officer to assistant animal control officer, so. We do, we appointed her two weeks ago. I move to appoint Wendy Savino as assistant animal control officer, in vice, the animal control officer. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, uh, now I, I. I moved to appoint Joshua Andrews. As an assistant animal control officer, he'll be filling another one of the rotational. Assistant animal control, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Mark, you're up.
All right, I have some good, um, Karma.
Oh, no, it's nine point three.
Oh, nine point three, I'm sorry, you're right.
I know where we are.
You can, you can use that. Um, nine point three, resignation of Mark Volta. Uh, Mark's been with us for a number of years, this evening, he has told us that, and, and handed his resignation was time to move on, so. This guy, I move to, I move to approve the resignation of Mark Volta as the director of the town Columbia. Discussion?
I'm sorry to see you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, now, Mark.
Uh, Karma, once again, we've been a long-term member of Karma. Uh, one advantage is, as a long-term participating member, we care a race lot for three years. And we also get to participate when, uh, Karma has a good year. Uh, they do a distribution, so the member equity distribution to us is nine thousand seven hundred fifty-two dollars. So that, that check, you already have the check. You know, um, it's, it's a. Good way of thanking, because it's a member of all the cities and towns owned by Karma. So it's working out great, it's more than passing. I also received thank you notes from a Mrs. Stump. Uh, she thought the public works. Uh, crew and Beth did a wonderful job on paving cars. If you want, can you pass that on? And I also got a thank you from Maureen Allen. Uh, she wanted to thank the public works crew for trimming all the brush. That was overtaking the dumpster area and the back wall between center cemetery. Becky Seemus. Pass that on, and then, um. This was a flyer put together by, um. Both John Sorilla, who works at the transfer station with Bobby Help of Brian Johnson, and Beth Lund. But they want to hand this out to Columbia Transfer Station etiquette. Trying to answer some questions that you won't find in a brochure, but, um. I've asked. That also worked on something visual, instead of reading, which a lot of people don't read. One-page documents, but visually see things, and we're just waiting with the new owners of Willamette Waste to make sure our recycling. Is locked in before we make those final signs. So we'll be handing this out, as you, Kirk, you take.
Except there's one big thing missing, what was that I seen? Commercial. Commercial, um, dumping, commercial, um, vendor.
Yeah, commercial.
Contractor, commercial dumping is not allowed.
Yeah.
Correct, is that correct?
Do they pay?
No.
No, they have, you have to get, when you're commercial, only for business have, have or own, you can't go in town. That's in most towns.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll have to, I think.
I'm pretty sure, I think it's on the transfer station.
Maybe probably, yes, we should look at that and do tailor it, something like the charges, by our own minds, I guess.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to give you a heads up that I'm working with Crowe. And also with C C M. To try to get small towns, I've been working with the Andover. Uh, town manager, Eric Anderson, and. We're trying to get. Connecticut D O T. To allow rural towns to participate in the T R I P funding opportunities. They don't allow us, because we don't have collector roads, it's a designation of roads, we're only rural, which eliminates us from the trip lines. So we don't feel that's fair. And Crowe is supporting this, and this is a letter that Crowe has sent. With our advocating board to the D O T to change the legislation to allow us. All these acting needs to be confusing, but there's federal money coming down. Uh, we now can, how we can qualify for federal money that normally went to counties, we've been missing out on a lot of county funding. Forever, because we don't have towns. So we finally got our dogs to be considered a town. So now we want to try to make sure we can qualify for any money that comes through this, you know. Stream, go the world. Um, then also included progress report. Was that, sorry? Oh, thank you. Um, I, I got visited by Denise again, over the same street, Lake Road, and Denise wants to try to start considering. We creating a garden club. Or not a garden club, a coordinated effort to adopt different areas of town that need garden attention. Um, I explained that we already have that in many areas, like, you know, the. Often gardens, being given by Justin McJoan, Ingrid, named things, Memorial Garden, our town historian, Millie does the Murphy House. And Senior Center, um, you said volunteer for the library, we lost that volunteer, she moved away. So, uh, just today, I had a couple of works, we have a new employee. Who was helping. Library here, a lot of overall things, but I just wanted to tell you, we're trying to work on this and trying to. Get the word out to the town that volunteers are needed and need help, it's very appreciated. And then. Your, your private private support.
Give me a, so, I'm not gonna want to get on private support, and you're sitting out there, so. Did anybody get to you about the repairing of the large monument, the cornerstone that you talked about?
Um, yes, um, yeah. Hot lunch and hot water.
Okay.
And that took a long. Now. That, um, gave me a test.
I thought it was, um.
I got a mortgage on large numbers.
I'll, I'll get that estimate right. Was I, I'm not, in the top of my head, I don't know if it was two hundred or eight hundred or post?
I, I think it was eight hundred.
Eight hundred per monument post and that installation, because you would need.
But.
Four.
You can't get brown stuff. So it has to be green. And so. I haven't had symmetry for any since, because I would keep that just. But. I, I think granite would be. Wouldn't. And this is it, and still come on. And round stone matches it.
I just wanted to know if somebody caught that.
What, we, it's.
Yeah, okay, so we'll work on that, I just want, I just want to make sure that.
Right, and, um, I did ask Beth just to advise me on that. And sure, what she told me in her email was, should not correct net replacing with a creepy which is called a patch.
A skin patch put over it.
Yeah. We've done.
It's got some cracks and. On the body. Okay. Alright. And then, uh, you'll see an article in the Chronicle about the old cemetery. And the revolution in what that could consider whole yard. Send moving and transferring. Okay, transfers, you now have a transfers, we just named it out, if you don't have a new one. So, twenty-one thousand two forty-seven, please ask, but I move to approve transfers toward twenty-eight thousand two hundred and forty-seven dollars as presented. Uh, the first, one, two, three, four, five, on the end of the year, women's money over, okay, no problem. Two thousand something dollars, the other, the three big ones are contingency. Already contingency, so that's.
Am I missing that one?
That's the only ones that I just gave you.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
So, um, from contingency thirteen-four to professional tech, professional tech, bottom line on this is it's about seven thousand dollars, and we are covering the cost to, okay, wreck park deepening the well. Here's what's happening, we put in a brand new well of the wreck park to handle the upper portion of the park along with the pavilion, right? It said it's fourteen, excuse me, it's four hundred, it's lower than the original well. So, the bottom line is the four hundred, this has enough water because it's taking all the water from, you know, the one that's, uh, you know, set higher. And that one runs out and will burn out pumps if we try to run it. So, we're going to ask for seven thousand dollars, you did the other one down to match it, four hundred, four hundred. So, it draws off the same level of water. And it should not one steal from the other. If there's not enough water now, there will be water, but we're feeling that we're in a very good place with the four hundred. Drop the other one down to four hundred, it should be in the same good place where there's water and it doesn't steal from the higher one. So, it's the equal of the, the aquatic pull from that area. That's number one, and the other part of that is uh, fix a concrete pad, Columbia, Columbia Fire Department for about sixty-four hundred dollars.
Is that with the, where's that?
It's in the back. It's in the back, cap over, not just a well, I think it's a cap over, um.
It said, it does say.
Concrete pad that's crappy on there and then the new survey. Remove, replace the damn concrete pad in the rear of the fire station.
Or a new one.
We have a concrete pad, we need a concrete pad, it's broken, we need a new concrete pad, but we're gonna pay for concrete.
Yeah.
Well, could be covered in dual tanks or, um.
I mean, it's there, so obviously we need it.
Which second thing?
Could be.
It could be, okay. Been working on this all, I think it's a different color. Or a bad hole, sorry, must be something to get at.
Yeah.
So, do we give bids on this? We, we have, um, we have two bids, we need two bids under one thousand, the other vendor was five hundred dollars more expensive. And you would use the same vendor to do the checking as his back. But we were able to. Okay, so I make emotionally approved transfers in the amount of twenty-one thousand two hundred and forty-seven dollars reflected in the items on the summary page. Any more discussion? All those in favor? We have a, uh, yeah, um, Chad, you have the originals for me? These are the bills.
Oh.
Yes.
Twenty-four hours. Okay, uh, thank you, my, uh, no, we have no refunds. I move to approve the payment of bills totaling three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars and seventy-two cents. Twenty-one, twenty-two, regular credit card payments.
Not that it amounted too much, but Karen Mercario Morales and Carolyn Ritchie, they both had all these little charges.
They do the zoomers, it's their, they're being paid by the vendors. We're still, uh, we're still okay on the budget for wreck park and pavilion? Yes.
It's looking.
See, and Scott Fanix, scorecard that they're doing, I saw Scott, they do underneath.
That's cool.
Very nice. The name Scott. You did one in the.
That's very nice. So, we're done with the paving cars, Mark?
Yes.
So, you hired somebody to do that?
They did a nice job.
Yeah, and then the other source guy ran over.
Right away, the storm blew all sorts of crap out of it.
So, where's this blacktop paving project? It, it's, it's into, you had both reformation, paving, and, um, materials, all kinds of cards now. Oh, the blacktop, that's a school, the twenty thousand? The school, that's out of their capital budget, and it was in the back of the school, they had a it was a slip and fall hazard of cracks, all the children come out of the building and run across pavement, it's in a whole quad. Why are we writing a check for that? Where is it at us? It's, it's out of their capital, but we, we pay the check. Sounds like finances that we ever, well, their, their capitals in our, they're, we have, we monitor that.
Right.
Pavilion septic. Do we have an idea what the surplus maybe be? Yeah, that's what I, the surplus? Just wreck park? We'll build an overall comment for, for the entire. Yeah. Four point, oh, yeah, four point two million dollars.
No, no, for, for the budget, for the town budget for twenty-one, twenty-two.
Um, let's see, that's what we want.
I got all the bills, I know it's too close to the end of the fiscal year.
Surpluses. For the town, Board of Selectmen General Fund, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars turned back. For the Board of Education, eighty-two thousand.
As of right now.
That's it. The chance is closed.
But there's nothing big right now.
And then the Board of Selectmen General Fund revenues. Um, general fund revenues. One hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. Bottom line comes to four point two. And that's a very good estimate. Altogether with the general fund we have, plus the divisions. Alright. Any discussion on the bills? All those in favor of paying? Opposed? Okay, mine is a citizen.
Yes, I I found out just this afternoon. That's not false. I definitely saw it. I was deeply saddened, you know, that. I was a member of a, um, a rich recognition from the school. And I think about least four of the rep directors. And when we got Mark, he was just head and shoulders, but everything, he did a wonderful job. And, um, I, I've seen the wrecked part in the row, and most of it was under his leadership. So, I, I just want to express that he did a wonderful job and very sad.
Thank you. Anybody online? No? No, and no chats, no. Uh, board member comments?
There's dots in the road at Uncle West.
It's not in the road, there's dots in it.
What you said.
Means the DOT is starting.
I don't know, I, I, I don't think that's the fix, I really don't, but.
Opposing turn lane, so you'll be able to see from the street.
Hopefully, hopefully.
Yeah, I want light.
No. What I've been noticing and hoping we can do maybe is have the lit stop signs at least on west, you know, that I, they have them lit up. So, when you're coming down west, you see stops. It's, it's kind of hidden until you get right up on it.
The sightline is just not.
What? When you come down west, you know, heading towards sixty-six, you can't see the stop sign until you get close to it, it's getting.
There's Russian way.
Okay, that is not the problem. Well, the problem of sixty-six is the hump and. The turn lane is the big issue. Yeah, not being able to see past the person that's in front of you, and you're going to see if there's an eye coming or one in turner. And you're going way too fast and it's not wide enough. Why can't that? But without opening up or staggering the view line or something, it's not gonna, I'm telling you. It's just gonna be a faster way around the cars that are there getting ready to use our slow down.
I know, I'm making.
And they won't, they won't.
You make the turn to go on to West Street for, um.
One of the problems is that when people are in there, they also go into the intersection. So, instead, they're gonna take a left turn, instead of staying so that other people can move, they move into the end and they block everything. So, now you can't oppose yourself, so they need that.
But they have to go, the cars are like this, right? This one's coming, this one's going, this one wants to turn this way, this one wants to turn this. This one cannot see over this one. This one can't see over this one, so they're like this. Oh, swing. They knows out there so they can see, and it's too late when the cars come at sixty-five miles.
I'm hoping that the opposing where one is facing the other directly as opposed to kicked over to the side, we'll get you a little bit.
I just wait for the car to turn, I'm assuming there's a car there behind us, why don't you turn until that car turns, but not everybody does that.
Don't go left.
Telling you what, turn around.
It's a bad intersection.
Alright, anybody else? The wreck park celebration, that's the one, we had to move it to October ninth second. Good thing I have speaker. Anyone else? Alright, so at this time, I'm going to ask, we suspend the Board of Selectmen meeting and enter into executive session, and I'm going to ask Mark, well, who's sticking around? But he wasn't supposed to get back. He's supposed to get back, you.
No, it was.
He, no, I, I, my, my, uh, role there that evening was as a plot owner. And then I'd say I can, in interest of the town, maybe taking over control or care of that. I wanted to know an accurate assessment of what it would take, so I was gonna send the director out. Other than that, I had no. Of course, yeah, I, I had no, yeah, so he has to get back to you.
That, that's how he understood it, that he should get back to me, so that's true.
We're going to exit executive session at eight twelve and resume the Board of Selectmen meeting. And I make a motion that we adjourn the Board of Selectmen meeting, all those in favor? Alright, opposed? But Chad? Thank you.